Works! Hurricane Andrew cut a 25-mile-wide path through the Everglades National Park. And there's more! Andrew left a huge path of destruction. Sixty-two people dead. Twenty-five thousand homes destroyed. Another 100,000 damaged. Well, be that as it may, I will now demonstrate the power of hurricanes! What a very good idea!
This has been the History of Hurricanes with Dr. Textbook.
Scary. See you, Dr. Textbook.
I'm glad we have lots of satellites. Isn't technology a wonderful thing?
But those are the hurricanes from the past. We still need to figure out how to predict the probability of the hurricane that's coming to Florida. Some of the Y Files Club members in Vera Beach, Florida, are playing the game right now. Let's dial them up and ask them about it.
Hi, I'm Ashandrea.
And I am Molly. And we are both here from Mrs. Strigley's 5th grade class at Thompson Elementary School in Vera Beach, Florida.
The Hurricane Game gives our class the experience of tracking a hurricane and predicting its possible landfall.
How do you track hurricanes in your game?
We use a tracking chart that has lines of longitude and latitude labeled on it. Throughout the game, we are given coordinates of where the eye of the storm is located at different times.
What do you mean by landfall?
Landfall is where a hurricane is expected to strike land. In the game, we issue watches and warnings to land areas that are in the path of the hurricane, just like we're meteorologists.
What is the difference between a watch and a warning?
A hurricane watch means that hurricane conditions are possible within 36 hours. A hurricane warning means that hurricane conditions are expected within 24 hours.
Well, we learned about that, but what are some of the forces that affect a hurricane's path?
The hurricane in our game is heading right for Cuba. We have a hurricane watch to issue right away, but to answer your question, there are some people at NOAA who could definitely help you.
Thank you so much for your very valuable help. No problem. So long from the Y Files Kids Club in the sunshine state of Florida.
Looks like NOAA's our next stop.
Yes, we need to learn more about the forces that can affect a hurricane's path.
I'll contact them and see if they can help us out. Don't forget your get-up-and-go sheets.
Hi, I'm Kaylee, and my friends and I are concerned about the hurricane in the Atlantic Ocean. We have a trip planned to SeaWorld that we don't want to miss, so we need to learn more about how to predict when a hurricane will strike land.
Well, you've come to the right place. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration began in 1970 to help track and predict weather and weather patterns.
We learned that to make a prediction, you sometimes use information you already have. Do you ever use the tracks of past storms?
Yes, in short terms such as days or hours, a storm's track may be influenced by a preceding one. A hurricane churns the ocean as it moves over the ocean's surface, bringing cold water from the bottom to the top.
Oh, I get it. We learned that a storm needs warm water for energy, so if the water on the surface is cold, the storm won't be able to grow as big.
That's correct. You've definitely done your research. We use computers to show us the track of hurricanes have taken in the past as a guide to show us where the current storm may go. Historical records of hurricanes go back to about 1492, the time of Christopher Columbus. And analyzing the data, scientists have found that every 10 to 30 years, hurricanes appear to come in different numbers. This is called the decadal scale. Scientists study this record so that they can figure out where we are in the cycle. On average, the Atlantic Ocean has about six hurricanes per season.
Wow, that's a lot of hurricanes.
Yes, it is, and fortunately, not all of them become strong storms. Some of them don't even make landfall.
We're wondering if the high-pressure system could prevent hurricanes from falling on land.
It is possible. Think of a hurricane as a block of wood floating in a river. Where the river's currents go, so goes the block of wood. A hurricane is a storm in a river of air which moves around the globe. The currents in this river of air are replaced by areas of high and low pressure. Since air circulates clockwise around a high-pressure system, a storm approaching it might be turned to the north or northwest.
If the hurricane does make land, how much land will be affected?
It depends on the size of the storm. Most storms are about the size of a state, 200 to 300 miles across. However, in the Pacific Ocean, there are monster storms reaching 1,000 miles in diameter.
Why are they so much bigger than those in the Atlantic Ocean?
The Pacific Ocean is the largest ocean, so there's a lot more warm water for them to move over, feeding their growth.
Is there more damage on one side of the storm versus the other?
Yes, a hurricane is strongest on its right-front quadrant because it rotates counterclockwise, and the speed of a hurricane must be added to its wind speed. So the right-front quadrant is moving faster toward you.
I don't think we want to be on that side of the storm for sure. Thanks, Ms. Minelli. This helps a lot.
Anytime. Good luck with your project.
Thanks so much. Bye.
In another weather development, there is a high-pressure system over the central area of the United States. It is moving towards the southeast. I'm meteorologist Lisa Moser with this update.
I think we need to form a new hypothesis.
Why?
Because now there's a high-pressure system that might keep the hurricane away.
So what's our new hypothesis?
I think it should be if the high-pressure system moves over the southeast part of the United States, then the hurricane will not hit Florida. I don't want to take my chances and go to Florida. Dr. Dean knows a lot about pressure. Maybe we should go talk to him.
That's a great idea, but first, I think I just fixed my coaster. Check it out.
Hi, Dr. D.
Hi.
Hi, guys. I'm a tornado box fetish. Do you want to see it?
Yeah.
What's the probability that it'll work? Remember, we went over probabilities last time we were here.
You've been talking about hurricanes for too long. Here we go.
That is really interesting. How does it work?
Well, in this case, it doesn't spin because of the Coriolis effect. The fan pushes the air out the top, and then air going through the slots on the sides is formed into a vortex with a counterclockwise rotation. So what's happened?
We think it's gonna be okay to make our trip to Florida.
How do you know?
Let's start with clouds. We learned that clouds form as warm moisture rises and cools. This cool air condenses to form clouds. It's this condensation that gives energy to hurricanes.
You know why the air cools when it rises?
No, I hadn't thought about it.
Moisture rises to a higher elevation with less pressure, it expands. Expansion is a cooling process. Let me show you. Blow on your hand like this.
It's pretty warm.
Now blow with your lips like this so the air has to expand.
Neat. It's much cooler.
Isn't science wonderful? I'm sorry I interrupted you. Keep going.
We've been watching the hurricanes very carefully and plotting its location on the hurricane-tracking chart. We know that hurricanes in our part of the world start in the Atlantic tropical waters and move to the west.
That's right, they're pushed along by the trade winds.
Dr. Brown taught us how light our measure the amount of water vapor in a hurricane.
That's important because the amount of water vapor determines the strength of the storm. Don't forget what the hurricane hunters are able to find out. We learned that there are a lot of factors used to predict the probability of landfall. But we think the key to this case is a high-pressure region in the southeast part of the United States that may block the approach of the storm.
What do you think, Dr. D?
Sounds like you've really worked hard on this. High-pressure regions can certainly affect the path of a hurricane, but remember, we can only talk about probabilities. You can't know for sure.
Wait, here comes a Weather Channel report.
Hurricane Ichabod has been quite active the last 12 hours. The eye of the storm was tracking northwestward, but if you recall, a high-pressure system building in the southeast is becoming stronger and moving towards the hurricane's path. Now, when these two systems collide, the ridge of the high pressure is causing the storm to curve its track into a northeasterly direction. Therefore, the hurricane watch has been discontinued over Florida.
The news channel just confirmed our hypothesis. We think there's a high probability that the high-pressure system will keep the storm off the shore, so we've decided to go to Florida.
Well, I certainly hope that you're right. I was going to a conference in Florida, and I decided to stay here instead.
You may be missing some nice weather.
Well, I don't think I want to take any chances.
Okay, Dr. D. You may be sorry.
This is awesome. We're so lucky to have such great weather. Too bad Dr. D didn't go to the conference. Sunny skies, no rain, and the temperatures are just right.
Oh, I shouldn't have given my chances and gone to Florida. Okay, I mean, that's...was...was he good on that?
Look forward to even more exciting mysteries next season when the NASA Y File becomes the NASA Sci-File.
In the hurricane, I mean, he had a hurricane...
I think he feels like it because he's soaking wet.
I'm getting a little wetter here.
Well, I mean, it's a storm. I mean, people don't go out in storms dry. I mean, this is for realism here.
...moves during an earthquake, and the Earth rotates just like it does on a globe. And generally speaking, that makes sense, but scientists who like to find out exactly what's going on know the ground actually moves around quite a bit. Days are never quite 24 hours, and the Earth actually wobbles on its axis in a very particular way as it revolves around the Sun. Scientists know all this by using a technique called very-long baseline interferometry, which is basically a fancy term for using radio dishes to very precisely measure the Earth's orientation. VLBI was originally developed back in the '60s to take pictures of quasars. Early on, though, someone realized that because quasars never really move, you could use them as reference points, throw the whole process in reverse, and figure out how all the telescopes were moving relative to one another. Basically, when a quasar emits a radio wave, that wave reaches different telescopes at different times. For astronomy, you'd use a computer to imitate a giant telescope and get a good picture of the quasar, but if you instead pay close attention to the time differences, you can use geometry to figure out how far apart the telescopes are. And by making lots of those measurements, you can start to see how the ground beneath the telescopes moves around when you have to adjust your clock and that the Earth wobbles on its axis as it moseys around the Sun. So the next time you feel like you've had a long day or that your house is a few millimeters from where you last left it, you can switch on a bunch of radio telescopes, point them at quasars, and find out just how right you are.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, everyone. Want to welcome you to City Hall. Shhh. Today's date is January 18th. Welcome again to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kocori, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Smith moves. Wesson seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves. Corretts seconds. That brings us where?
Items 1 through 6 are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item 3 has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
All right, well, why don't we prepare to vote on those items? Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you like to vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. That brings us where?
Items 7 through 10 are items through which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this council. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. There are cards on 7 through 10, sir.
Okay, let's hold those items and move forward.
On the continuation agenda, item 11 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
All right. Mr. Bloomingfield.
On behalf of Mr. Bonin's request, could we continue item 11 for two weeks?
So we're talking about continuing this item until February 1st?
Correct.
So without objection, so ordered. All right, so that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, what I want to do, let's see. Mr. Rue, are you ready? You want to begin with your presentation? Why don't we start there? Then, Mr. Corretts, we'll get to you. Mr. Rue, you got a little competition outside, so you may want to be a little louder than normal.
Thank you, Mr. President, and 안녕하세요. Good morning, colleagues. I am so thrilled to be here with Mr. Byungman Lee, president of the Korean American Foundation in Los Angeles; Emile Mack, vice president of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles; In Hang Hwang, deputy consul general of the Republic of Korea; Eunice Sung, the newly-minted executive director of the Korean American Coalition; Hyun Ju Lee, president of the 3.1 Women's Association; Ki Hyung Han, the president of the Council of Korean Churches of Southern California; and of course, Mr. Ralph Ahn.
Let's give him a round of applause. Yes, welcome.
Well, Mr. Ralph Ahn, who carries the legacy of his father, Do Sang An Chang Ho, and who is also a teacher. We join together in friendship and honor to celebrate Korean American Day. We know the Korean American story is the Los Angeles story and that here, the place that is home to more Koreans than anywhere outside of Korea, Korean American businesses, communities, and leaders have shaped the success and culture of our great city. 2018 was an incredible year for Korean Americans throughout the United States. Whether it's Khloe Kim taking home the gold in the Winter Olympics, Andy Kim, the first Korean American in Congress in 20 years, or the amazing Sandra Oh, a star of Killing Eve and a council District 4 resident, hosting and winning at the Golden Globes. or the amazing Sandra Oh, a star of Killing Eve and a Council District 4 resident hosting and winning at the Golden Globes. Korean Americans are reaching new heights of success and visibility. Every community needs role models, someone to look up to, who share their culture and their background, who inspires young people to reach for their highest potential. So, this means so much to Korean American kids across the United States, looking for positive role models and proof that in this country, they can achieve anything that they want. But these icons of Korean American achievement stand on the shoulders of giants, not just the well-known leaders, but the so many of those who go unnamed and unnoticed. The cooks, the security guards, the small business owners. It's thanks to their work and their struggle and their perseverance of the many generations before us that have allowed the Korean Americans to get to where we are today. That's why I'm so honored to share this event today with the Korean American community, all the churches, the nonprofits, the community centers, who serve the nearly quarter million Korean Americans who call Los Angeles home. It all began 116 years ago, when 102 brave men, women, and children embarked on a journey west to brighter shores. They did not know what lay before them. They did not know what struggle or hardships were ahead. But they could have never imagined how future generations would achieve, the communities that we would build, the battles we would win, the businesses and industries we would create. And that today, with over 1.8 million Korean Americans in the United States, that we will be leading the next great chapter of the American story. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Byung Man Lee, President of the Korean American Foundation of Los Angeles.
Welcome, welcome.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Byung Man Lee. I'm the President of the Korean American Foundation of Los Angeles. Before I eventually to say a few words, please allow me to introduce my colleagues and Korean community civic leaders who accompany with me this morning in L.A. City. Let me let her go quickly for the shake of time. I have here Deputy Counsel General Mr. Huang In Sang, Reverend Ki Hyung Han, Los Angeles Korean Church Council President; Mr. Young Shin Kwon, President of Korean National Association Memorial Foundation; Ms. Cookie Be, Chairperson of Executive Committee of Korean American Foundation of L.A. Due to time-saving, allow me that I would like to introduce some persons just named without title. Yun Ju Lee, Hong Hyun Lo Kim, Dong Lee Cheong, Kyung Ha Kim. About 30 Korean community leaders with us this morning. It was in the year of 1903, when the first Korean ever came to shore of this great country of the United States of America. They came to work as sugar plantation workers. From that early period, Koreans struggled hard to be a critical part of this nation. It is safe to say that the descendants of those early Koreans play an important and pivotal role in various sectors in fabric of American society. As responsibility citizens, Koreans want to contribute their spirit and character to the significant cost and determination as they all enjoy their lives. For the reason, we pleased and proud that one of such descendants of Koreans served in the great Los Angeles City. Thank you, all the city council, especially Chair Mr. Webb Watson. Thank you very much. We are here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next, I'd like to invite Deputy Counsel General Huang to give us a few words.
Deputy Counsel General, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and honorable council members. On behalf of the Korean government, I'd like to thank you all for having this wonderful event and adopting this great resolution. Actually, despite a lot of challenges, Korean Americans have made great contributions to the community. And also, this resolution signifies a special partnership between Korea and L.A., because I mean, there is home to the largest Korean American community. One more thing to say is, we are witnessing very positive development on the Korean Peninsula. State Secretary Mr. Pompeo is having a meeting with his counterpart here in Washington, D.C. Now, they are having a meeting. And my thanks goes to also city council for their support for this peace process on the Korean Peninsula. We really hope today we will harvest tangible outcomes within this year. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel. Next, our very own former fire chief and Vice President of the Korean American Federation, Mr. Emile Mack.
Chief Mack, welcome.
Thank you, Council President.
Who was raised on Jefferson Boulevard, off Jefferson Boulevard in my district, right?
That's right. That's right. So, that was my old stomping grounds. But I appreciate being here today. On the fire department, it took me 20 years to get to this podium. In retirement, it's 2. So, I'm not sure about retirement now. But anyway, Council President Wesson, members of the council, Councilman Rue, we want to thank you for honoring us here today. It's my privilege to represent the Korean American Federation and to be part of this body that is representing the Korean community that lives here in our city. But most, we want to thank you. Thank you for honoring us and recognizing Korean Americans that live and thrive and are part of our city. As you've heard, we've been here since 1903. That's when the first immigrants came. They faced challenges just like any other immigrant community, language and culture. And it was hard, as it is hard for many of the cultures that immigrate here, to chase that American dream. But the Korean community has persisted with determination and sacrifice. They've made this their home. They've educated their children and become part of the fabric and the mainstream of our city and our country. And as we said before, ultimately, to follow the American dream that has led so many people from so many distant lands to our home here. There are many Korean Americans that have made significant contributions to our shared history and to the communities we live in. Councilman Rue said some of those earlier, so I won't repeat that. But going on, the Korean community has also experienced things that have not been easy. The 1992 civil unrest was a very devastating time for our community. But we learned from the way Americans are, and that is the unrelenting American spirit. And that is, our community came together to learn from that hardship, to build and develop the relationships with our political leaders, with our other communities, and build those bridges and relationships that truly will bound our city together and make us even stronger as a unified force. So, Korean American Day is recognizing not only our history, but the history of our country. And we want to share our diversity, our culture, with the greater city. So, we here celebrate Korean Americans as part of the American experience and the pursuit of the American dream. We want to thank you for recognizing us today, and it is truly an honor and a privilege to be part of a great city and a great country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emile. And to close, last but not least, we'll hear some wise-sage words from Mr. Ralph Ahn.
All right, it's so good, Ralph, to see you again. You are so welcome here.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's good to see you. And, Mr. President, council members, and Ms. Gloria Gray with the M.W., Metropolitan Water District, we thank you for helping us commemorate Korean American Day. Now, Korean American Day has been observed all over the United States, but it has a special meaning here in Los Angeles. And let me tell you why, and I'll make it very short. It was in 1903 that the first measurable migration of Korean patriots came to the United States at the territory of Hawaii to work on the sugar plantations. Two years later, some of those Korean American patriot immigrants came to California. When they came to California, they discovered that through international treaty, Korea was placed under the domination of an exploited foreign empire. And when they came to California, they saw a nation where sovereignty rested with the people rather than the autocracy from where they came. So, inspired by our Declaration of Independence, these Korean pioneer immigrants came together with other immigrants here in California to form the Korean National Association to battle for their independence. It was these Korean immigrants that, with their meager means, limited income, fought the fight of spreading the word that Korea should be independent. It was these Korean immigrants that helped establish and sustain the Korean Provisional Government in Shanghai, which was the cornerstone of the Democratic Republic of Korea, which thrives today as a free and independent nation. And, Mr. President, the Korean National Association was here in Los Angeles, in your district on Jefferson Boulevard. And the building still stands today. The memorial building still stands today on Jefferson Boulevard and Budlam. And again, Mr. President, council members, thank you for observing this day.
Thank you, Ralph.
Yeah, well, Mr. Rue, before you wrap this up, I just want to say that it is just really, really good to see you all, especially my dear friend Ralph. Our relationship goes back to his teaching and my son playing football for one of his school's rival. And that's kind of like what brought us together. But what makes this the greatest country on the planet? Why people from all over the globe want to come to Los Angeles? It's because of our diversity and because we have set an example that it doesn't matter who you are or what you look like. If you work hard, you catch a break, you can rise in this country, and you can be whatever you want to be. The Korean community has been a pillar in Los Angeles. It literally saved Koreatown at a time when it was going down. We are so fortunate to have you as our brothers and sisters, fellow Americans. And to each and every one of you, I say from the bottom of my heart, 새해 복 많이 받으세요.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of yourself and the entire city council, we'd like to present this resolution for Korean American Day to the Korean American community.
Mr. Corretts, as they are leaving, your entourage can begin to go to the center aisle. Mr. Corretts?
Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It is my great honor to recognize my friend Gloria Gray, who has been a longtime leader in the city of Inglewood, where she began her career in 2006 as a member, I believe, as a member of the school board back then. Longtime member also of the West Basin Water District and a great member and colleague for a while on the Metropolitan Water District Board. We've had some pretty dramatic changes in this country in the last election, as we saw a much more diverse Congress elected. And here we have a landmark election. I believe Gloria will be the first African American ever elected in the 90-year history of the Metropolitan Water District Board, and the second woman. And this is a tough job. This is a 37-member board. And I think chairing it, you might need a whip and a chair. It's a tough thing. It also is a group that has not always been that diverse. Historically, white male-dominated, people that have been on for a long time. They're even fondly nicknamed the Water Buffalos, the folks, the white males that have been on for a long, long time. So, we're going to see some change here. We also look forward to having support from a chair who is from the greater L.A. area. And so, we know this will be a great thing. I hope it'll be a great thing for her. I hope she knows what, doesn't wonder what hit her. It's a lot of work, even serving on the board, but chairing it, I think, is a more than full-time job. I know she'll be up to the task, and it is my honor to introduce and recognize Ms. Gloria Gray.
Let me before, let's give her a round of applause. Because Lord knows that Gloria is deserving. But Gloria, I'll just say this. At one point in my life, I did, I was the quarterback of a team that had 80 members. That was tough. Forty-seven, you can handle that. If anybody can do it, I know that it's you. And it's hard for me to get my head around the fact that it's taken 90 years of its existence to elect African American. But I've known Gloria for a long time. She, as do many of us seated around this horseshoe, she has this incurable desire to serve people. And she is a, you know, she likes to get results. And she's going to be easy to work with because publicity's not important to her. It is completing the project that is important to her. It is delivering the services that the people in this region need. The board itself is becoming more diverse, and you guys are a phenomenal group of individuals yourself. If you just recognize at this point in time that you've got a quarterback in Gloria Gray, she's going to make sure that everybody gets their touches of that ball. So, Gloria, we are so honored to have you here in council today, and I want you to know that it was a tremendous honor for you to ask me to speak at your swearing-in ceremony. It was an event that I will never forget. Let us give Gloria another round of applause. Well-deserved. Took a very long time, ups and downs, but it's just, but you're still here, and you're still standing. I'd like to recognize Mr. Joe Buscayino. Oh, I'm sorry, I called the wrong person, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Mr. Coretts and council for honoring Gloria Gray today. I've known and supported Gloria for a long, long time. In fact, I was one who encouraged her to run for the school board. She served with a great deal of distinction as a member and as the president of the board. And then, of course, her outstanding service on the West Basin Water Board and now with the Metro Board. So Gloria, we're just, we're just so honored, we're proud of you. So proud, in fact, that we're going to be honoring you in these chambers on February the 15th as part of our Black History Celebration. So again, we're just pleased that you are in a position of leadership, of showing responsibility, of showing what it takes to collaborate and to get things done. And so we're so happy that you're there. Keep up the good work and continue success. See you on the 15th.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Chairperson of the MWD. Gloria, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. And first, let me, before I begin my remarks, I want to congratulate the Korean-American Foundation and the community. I know that Raf Han has left and the delegation, but thank you, Herb, for recognizing how important diversity here is here in this community. So I want to convey my congratulations to that community. First of all, let me thank Council President Herb Wesson and Council Member Paul Coretts for recognizing me this morning and the entire city council. When I look around the room, yes, I know many of you here, certainly the Council Member Sadeo and Council Member Martinez and others in the group. And so it's just indeed a pleasure and I do appreciate the recognition. Thank you for those comments this morning from both of you, Council Member Coretts and Council President Wesson. I appreciate that you recognize the importance of this particular position that I have and how important it is not only to Metropolitan but also to the entire city. And I appreciate the fact that we have a great relationship with the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank LADWP, LA Sanitation, and certainly Mayor Garcetti and the entire council member. You have been, all of you have been very helpful to me and also to Metropolitan. There's a delegation that represents LA City, the mayor's office on the board of Metropolitan Water District. And two of them are here this morning. I'd like to recognize them, Director John Murray and Director Mark Goze. They are here today.
Give them a round of applause. I see Big John in the back.
And they have done a wonderful job representing your city. And I look forward to continue to work with the entire delegation. Lorraine Pascat is also part of that delegation. I may forget the names, Keonis, Jesus Keonis is a member. Who am I forgetting, John, or who else? Glenn Dake, how can I forget Glenn Dake, my friend Glenn Dake. And so you have a wonderful representation, representatives on that board. And so again, I look forward to working with all of you. If you would just, well, before you, I ask you to indulge me because I'd like to introduce the people who are behind me.
Please.
First of all, let me thank Mayor Garcetti. Please convey to him my appreciation for him attending my swearing in ceremony and also the elegant comments he made. And look forward to that, continuing that relationship. I've known the mayor for many years and we've worked together. And so I was very, I'm very appreciative that he attended. And Herb Wesson, you've been my friend for years. We've known each other and I appreciate you being there and you really helped us to recognize the importance of family and friends. You came to my event and you talked about your grandchild. And I think it's your first, your son's first grandchild.
Yes, my youngest son.
And I know that your thoughts were there, but you still came to my event and I appreciate you showing up. So thank you so much. Again, you know, it's important to recognize people who are there to support you. And I've had a lot of support throughout the years. And certainly my family has been just awesome in terms of sacrificing and supporting me. So this morning I have with me my daughters. I'd like to introduce Monica Ector.
Let's give Monica a round of applause. Good to see you again.
Denise Mitchell.
Hey, Denise.
Raise your hand, Denise. And my extended family, I have a huge extended family, would you remember, and extended family daughter Tiffany Kennedy. Raise your hand, Tiffany. And I also have a friend who's been with me for years. She's like my sister who traveled here from Atlanta. And she's had some challenges, but she wanted to be here. And so I'd like to introduce Winnie Smith from Atlanta.
Ms. Smith, welcome to Los Angeles.
And some other friends who are here this morning, May Wood Bush, May Wood. May Wood is from Inglewood Unified School District because we've known each other for years, great supporter. Katrina Davis, great friend, supporter.
I see Brother Williams.
Katrina Davis. Did I introduce Katrina Davis? Right, right. All right, Dallas Fowler is here. She's the Commissioner with the City of Los Angeles. And I was pleasantly surprised to see. Cynthia McLean-Hale is here. I think she's back there. What a nice surprise.
Let's give Cynthia a round of applause. Good to see you, Cynthia.
And a business owner in the city of Inglewood, Billy Campbell, his business is Allstate, so he's here, one of our business members. And I want to introduce some of Metropolitan's staff because they're key to my success and I recognize that. So I'd like to introduce, which is no introduction to some folks, but Jeff Kuytlinger is the General Manager of Metropolitan Water District. And I'm very, very happy and just pleased that he is here and will be working alongside of me. So Jeff Kuytlinger, the General Manager for Metropolitan Water District.
Jeff, welcome to City Hall. Good to see you.
Great. And also we have Dee Zink, who is an Assistant General Manager. Dee is wonderful. She's, I think, in charge of external affairs.
We see you in the back, welcome.
So she's interacted with your staff. We also have former Assistant General Manager Gil Ivy, who is here today. Thank you, Gil, for being here.
Welcome, hey.
And I wanted to introduce one of my board members, and he's always been very supportive in my entire board from West Basin. Harold Williams is an elected member of West Basin Water District Board, but he also is a representative on the Metropolitan Water District Board representing West Basin. So Harold, thank you for being here.
Let's give Mr. Williams a round of applause. Just saw you two nights ago.
And I want to introduce some of the staff from West Basin who have a fantastic General Manager as well as Jeff, but also for West Basin, it's Patrick Shields. He's the General Manager from West Basin Water District. Patrick?
Welcome, sir.
And I have a tremendous staff support. And I want to introduce Julie Frazier Matthews from West Basin.
Welcome.
And this next year lady has been just awesome. Jeff has signed her to me when I got elected and it's been a whirlwind since October and she has been fantastic. And so she is the assistant, my assistant here at Metropolitan. Her name is Elisa Jaron. Elisa, where are you?
Good to see you again.
Thank you, thank you, Elisa, for everything that you do. I hope I didn't forget anybody, did I forget anybody back there? Oh, yes. I want to introduce also part of my team. They are Ken Ashford. Thank you, Ken, for everything that you do to support me.
All the way in the back.
Benita Thomas, right. Benita Thomas, Benita, where are you? She's on my advance team. Thank you, Benita. Anyone else I forget back there? Yeah, it's always important, you know this, Herb, you always recognize folks.
You're nothing without them, so I respect that.
Thank you for indulging me. And I would like to offer a few comments if I can, please.
Go ahead.
The city of Los Angeles and Metropolitan Water Districts have a long history. Ninety years ago, Los Angeles was one of the founding cities of the, that established Metropolitan so we could deliver water to Southern California from the Colorado River. Over the decades, we have worked together to ensure that this growing region has access to a safe, reliable water supply. And now in my role as Chairwoman, I look forward to continuing that partnership with you to plan for our water future. The city of Los Angeles has been a leader in water conservation and developing new local water supplies. And I am proud of Metropolitan's investments in local water projects and water conservation. These investments build on but do not replace our imported water system. Metropolitan is also initiating exciting new local investments. Our proposed regional recycle water project, which is unlike anything Metropolitan has undertaken, will begin testing this spring. And my home water district of West Basin Municipal Water District is a state leader in recycling. I want you to know that I have inherited a strong Metropolitan. We are a reflection of the diversity of the 19 million people in our service area. My goal is to ensure Metropolitan embraces the diversity of our region. Just as the city of Los Angeles was crucial to Metropolitan's beginnings, Los Angeles will continue to be an important partner for our water agency. Together, we must prepare for the dual impacts of growth and climate change. We need to make our shared vision for a more sustainable future a reality. And we must make sure that each community we serve benefits from that commitment. Lastly, the shared mission of the Metropolitan Water District and the city of Los Angeles to ensure that all residents have access to clean, safe, excuse me, affordable water is a noble one. Thank you for taking the time today to highlight the importance of water in our communities. I look forward to collaborating with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give Ms. Gray another round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
And we very much look forward to working with Gloria closely in the future. And so it is my honor to present her on behalf of the council with a resolution recognizing her great work to date and her great work to come.
All right. And so again, congratulations, Gloria. As they are leaving, I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez and request that Mr. Buscayino come to the chair.
All right, good morning, good morning. You look good up there, Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. The floor is yours.
Do you like that tie? That tie looks good on you.
You like that, huh?
All right.
Thank you for it.
All right, let's get started. Good morning, colleagues and members of the public. With me today are members of the Commission of the Status of Women and our General Manager, Salita Williams from the Department of Transportation, Reynolds.
It's fine, it's fine. It's a white girl last name, doesn't matter.
Sorry, Salita, I was just going to call you Salita because that's usually what I do. But today we're celebrating the Safe Cities LA in coordination with the UN Women's Safe Cities Day. The initiative's main goal is to make public spaces safer for women and girls. This includes spaces such as plazas, markets, but also includes public transit buses and trains. The lack of gender-sensitive transit services has a negative impact on the lives of women. This is occurring worldwide. Women of all religions and cultures are impacted, but especially those living in poverty. When women do not feel safe taking public buses or trains, they are held back from pursuing their goals. This includes education, jobs, everyday activities like grocery shopping. A study based on Los Angeles found that women were significantly less likely to take advantage of a new rail line near their home because they fear that they're going to be victims of crime on the train. If a woman can't take the bus or a train to work or to school because she's afraid of being groped or harassed, then we're failing her. Right now in Los Angeles, nearly three, third of female metro riders report having experienced a sexual harassment incident while riding metro. As a city, we have the responsibility to make women feel safe and secure in Los Angeles. The Los Angeles Commission of the Status of Women in collaboration with Metro and the Los Angeles Department of Transportation are working together to identify in ways to, they can improve and make it so much safer for women to be able to ride a mass transit in our city. A core piece of this strategy is to understand how women are traveling and how important it is for them to make sure that they're choosing the right mode of transportation that they feel safest in. We know that the core ridership are low-income residents, but we have to also make sure that they feel safe to ride our transit system. A lot of them happen to be women as well. By empowering women through these policies, we promote sustainable and social and economic development for them. I applaud Metro and LADOT for committing to making sure that our systems are safer. They are both making strides towards educating their employees on how to identify human trafficking victims on their systems. When I brought my concerns about sexual harassment on the metro system, Metro in coordination with LAPD was quick to make sure that there were improvements, that we're identifying improvements to ultimately benefit women riders in our system. I also want to thank the Commission of the Status of Women for making this one of their priority issues and serving as a link to the UN Safe Cities Initiative. We have come a long way, but we have a long way to go. Today, we urge Los Angeles and the cities around the world to support policies at work to end the harassment of women in public spaces. Together, we can make this city safer and more equal space for women to pursue their dreams. I'd like to welcome our General Manager of the Department of Transportation, Salita Reynolds. Okay, Reynolds? From the Department of Transportation to say a few words. So welcome, my friend.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, for your leadership on gender equity. Transportation is a woman's issue, which means it is a human rights issue. And as a mother of two daughters who happen to also be LA Unified students, who are out marching with their teachers today, who also happens to take the bus or ride my bike to work every day, I see firsthand what it feels like to move through a system as a woman. It feels vulnerable, it feels unsafe, you feel unprotected and you feel alone. And so we have to change that because every time a woman doesn't feel safe getting on a bus to go to a night class to better herself, her family suffers. This year, we are putting together a needs assessment that studies what women in our city are not able to do because our transportation system fails them. Our transportation system was designed for you if you are a white-collar nine-to-five worker, mostly male. But if you are a woman, or if you're a child, or an older adult, or a person with disabilities, it fails you. And when it fails you, it fails our city because it keeps us from opportunity, it keeps us from doing things to make lives better for our family, for our children, for our neighborhoods, and for all of us. Since I took the leadership position at the Department of Transportation over the last four years, every single person I have hired for the executive team has been a woman or a person of color. Put more women in charge. In order to combat this problem, the people who design the services and the spaces that we create need to look like the city that we serve. And I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Martinez for her consistent leadership, for lifting up the voices of the people who can't speak for themselves, who don't have a space in halls and rooms like this because that's the only way. in halls and rooms like this, because that's the only way we're going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're very, very fortunate to have Celita leading the way in terms of what improvements needs to be made to mass transit and what the responsibility of the Department of Transportation is to make sure that women feel safe. I also want to welcome the newest commissioner to the Commission of the Status of Women, my good friend, Francesca Vega. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Nuri Martinez, for leading today's city council presentation on the Safe Cities Initiative. Again, my name is Francesca Vega, and I'm a commissioner on the Commission of the Status of Women. The commission applauds your leadership in making sure women and girls are safe. We also thank Mayor Garcetti and members of the city council for your continuous efforts to achieve gender equality here in Los Angeles. Through the Safe Cities Initiative, we join a global call to action to end all forms of harassment and discrimination against women in public spaces. A call to protect women's rights, which are human rights. As local leaders, it is our job to create the conditions under which women and girls can thrive. It is our job to, in all that we do, make sure that we, number one, understand women and girls' specific needs; two, account for their needs when we design city services; and three, allocate resources to address those needs. Until 2011, car and seatbelt designs were based on the height and weight of the average man. As a result, female drivers are 47% more likely to be seriously injured in a car crash, in particular pregnant women. This is just one example of many non-gender-sensitive products and services that affect women's safety. Today, we are proud to stand next to Celita Reynolds, a fearless leader that is making sure nothing that comes out of the Los Angeles Department of Transportation is gender-blind. I also want to take an opportunity to acknowledge Metro and their efforts. Safe, accessible, affordable, and timely transportation play a fundamental role in women and girls' access to education, employment, healthcare, childcare, and other key services. In 2019, the commission looks forward to supporting the work of the city council, city departments, and other key stakeholders to address these needs and build a city that is safe for all women. And we are delighted to have Councilwoman Martinez, Mayor Garcetti, the city council, Celita Reynolds, Los Angeles Department of Transportation, and Metro leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Martinez, we have one speaker on the queue. I'd like to recognize Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Reynolds, and all the members of the commission for being here and speaking about this important issue, which I can tell you, as a Metro board member, Metro takes exceptionally seriously. For well over a year now, Metro has been studying every part of the system to find ways that we can ensure greater safety and a greater sense of security for all of our passengers, but specifically for women. And the dividends are already starting to be paid. When we have a greater LAPD presence on the system, when we're ensuring that people are feeling safer on our system, that has a dramatic impact on people's ability to utilize the system. Metro is specifically studying right now, how do women use public transportation differently? What are women's specific needs in public transportation? And so we're planning greater utilization efforts to make the system more user-friendly for women as well. Metro is deeply committed to developing careers for women as well. And we're so proud of the work that Phil Washington has done in ensuring that there are more women and girls who are developing a career path for a career in public transportation. And then finally, especially through the effort of our Mayor Garcetti and our board member, Jacqueline Dupont Walker, we've placed great emphasis on enhanced contracting opportunities for women as well, because we have a lot of money to spend on this system, and not enough of it is going to women and minority-owned contractors, but we're changing that. So that's creating more opportunities throughout our city as well. But this issue of safety is paramount. It's paramount for all of our passengers, and especially at a time when how people get around and mobility is changing. This is the time to ensure that those disruptive changes that are happening include a greater commitment, not a weakened commitment to safety. So when we utilize TNCs, for example, I'm going to continue to ensure that TNC operators are fingerprinted and have their background checked so that TNCs are safe for women as well. But throughout the metro system, you can count on Mayor Garcetti and all of the board members, including myself, to continue this commitment to ensuring that passengers are safe throughout our system. So thank you very much for bringing this card.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Today is not just about making sure that we are identifying ways in which women use mass transit, but also acknowledging the fact that we've come a long way. But it's also calling upon other cities to do the same. So appreciate all your work on Metro. And on behalf of the city council, I want to present this to our commissioners on the Status of Women and our wonderful general manager, Celita Reynolds, and working together to ensure that women feel safe and we can do everything we can to empower their safety in public spaces. Thank you very much, acknowledging the Safe Cities Los Angeles Initiative. Thank you.
Just giving her a round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for really shedding light on this important issue, our public transportation system. We appreciate you. With that now, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Greg Smith for an important message.
Public service announcement.
PSA.
So yesterday, ladies and gentlemen, in case you had forgotten, was the 25th anniversary of the Northridge earthquake, an earthquake that had a far-reaching effect throughout every community of this city, particularly in the San Fernando Valley in my district where the epicenter was. I wanted to take this opportunity to remember that event because we, as a city, were challenged. This building was condemned for three years, and the council was moved out of here for three years and had to meet across the street because this building needed $100 million of repairs. 53,000 people were homeless within just a matter of moments in the San Fernando Valley and along the 10th corridor and into the 8th district as well, where freeways collapsed, people were killed. 53 people died in my district. In Mr. Rodriguez's district, a mobile home park, 600 mobile homes fell off their foundations onto the ground. Half of them snapped their gas lines. A fire ensued, and about 70% of the homes were destroyed in that fire. It was a regional disaster, and one that I think we can be very proud of as well, because LA recovered in less than two years, 18 months to two years. Everybody was back in their homes in this city. If you look at Katrina, half the population still is not in their homes in Katrina, in New Orleans. This city did a marvelous job, and our police and fire were magnificent on that day, but our citizens were prepared. I worked for a guy named Hal Bermsen. He was known as Mr. Earthquake. He brought in an ordinance in 1981 that was called the URM Ordinance, Unreinforced Masonry. We had 9,800 buildings in this city that were made out of brick and mortar with no metal whatsoever, and he said, "We have to fix them." On the day of the Northridge earthquake, out of the 9,800, 8,700 had been fixed. Not one of those fell down. And of the few others remaining, many of them were heavily damaged, but no loss of life whatsoever. I remember when Hal Bermsen retired, the Times, who was not a fan of Hal Bermsen whatsoever, said, "We have disagreed with him on many things, but in retrospect, he saved thousands of lives." So this city wrote the first ordinance in America of that kind, and now everybody has copied it. We have been a leader in earthquake preparedness, and I wanted to remind people today, people at home and people in the audience, that the next earthquake is really upon us. If you look at the history earthquakes in Southern California, 1934, Long Beach, 1952, Bakersfield, 1971, Silmar, 1994, Northridge, all of them, about 20 to 25 years, and yesterday was the 25th anniversary. You need to be prepared. So I want to remind people in your homes, when you go to the store, just buy a couple extra cans of food. If you like it, buy Spam. Mr. Ru says he likes Spam. Some people don't. Buy Spam, get some food, just a couple cans every time you go. You'd be surprised how quick you would build up. In my neighborhood, we had no water for seven days, seven days of no water. My swimming pool became the neighborhood watering hole, and people I'd never met in my life were coming to my house thinking, "Can I have a bucket of water?" By the end of the seventh day, my pool was empty. These are the kind of things you have to think about. So water is critical to life. Buy water when you store. Just store it in a corner somewhere. Do things to help yourselves. When the entire San Fernando went black that morning at 4:12 in the morning, it was really, really dark. Have a flashlight. Batteries you have to replace, but there are also other products like this one that you can plug in, and when the lights go off, the power goes off, it turns into a flashlight immediately, and it's plugged into the wall. You can see what's below you. By your feet, we had thousands of people ended up in the emergency rooms with cuts on their feet from glass, jumping out of bed, running to get under a door or hide somewhere, cut their feet. So have some slippers by your floor, something that you can protect yourself. I can tell you, strange things happened in that earthquake. My wife and I had a water bed. This is really weird. We had a water bed. They were popular back then. Our bedroom in Grati Hills rose 13 feet in the air and collapsed back down. 13 feet. The acceleration rate, the gravity rate was such, you cannot get out of your bed, you cannot move until it collapsed back down. A number of days later, we were cleaning up our bedroom and taking the water bed out, and we found three pictures that had come off a wall, flown between our bed and the springs, and the bed fell back down on them. We didn't know where those things went until we tore out the bed. Strange things happen. The force of gravity is immense. What you will experience is immense, but it's really simple to be ready. You can buy these items at the store. You can get earthquake kits from $20 to $100, simple little things like straps for your refrigerators, your arnois in your bedrooms, TVs. TVs become deadly projectiles. So I hope people will think about it the next time they go to the store. They'll look for these products. They're easy to find, easy to buy. And let's be prepared. When President Clinton came here after the earthquake, he said he was amazed at how prepared we were considering what the damage was. And the Region 9 Director of FEMA many years later gave us an award as the most prepared city in America. Let's keep that up. Be vigilant, be ready, but remember, we are going to have another huge earthquake, and it could be as much as this afternoon, or next week, or next year, but it is coming and is coming sooner than later. We are on that 25-year cycle. So ladies and gentlemen, please be prepared. Do yourself a favor. When that earthquake comes, you will not have government services immediately. The government will be stretched beyond its capacity. We will not be there for you sometimes in a matter of days. So just be ready and be safe, and we will all live through the next one, but it takes your vigilance to do this. So thank you, Mr. President, and we remember this earthquake.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. With that, to continue the public service announcement, I want to recognize Mr. Blumenfeld, followed by Mr. Krikorian.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for raising the issue. Yesterday, I spent a lot of time, most of the day, at different commemorations for the earthquake. The earthquake was actually, I found it was actually centered in Reseda. It's called the Northridge earthquake, but it was in Reseda. And for me, it changed my life, changed the trajectory of my life. 25 years ago, when that earthquake hit, I was the legislative director for Congressman Howard Berman, and it was his district that the earthquake was centered in. And we scrambled to try to get, you know, first and foremost, to try to get the funding. And I raised this because it was tough back then. We had a fight about offsets and how much it would be, and we ended up getting the largest single infusion of federal dollars into a district up until that point. But it was, we almost weren't able to get that because of this offset issue. And I really worry because of the comments the president has made recently, not wanting to fund some of the fire issues, that we're not going to be able to get that kind of funding. And so we really need to be, and I want to underscore how self, we need to be self-reliant. We were lucky. FEMA at that point, with James Lee Witt, they were at their zenith. They were really top-notch, and they were here. I know I spent the next, you know, after that earthquake hit, I spent the next year and a half, what my job at that point was legislative director, it changed into recovery guy. And I was with my team. We were working with SBA and FEMA and trying to get folks back in place, getting, changing the hospital algorithms. Even our district office, you talked about what happened, our district office was destroyed. And the team had to operate out of the jail cell in San Fernando, the city of San Fernando. And we were coordinating from DC, the water drops and the different things to try to help the folks that were going to, that needed desperate assistance in those early days. And the early days were, there's all sorts of stories that we can all share about the early days, but the key was the next year, the recovery, because people thought that LA would become a ghost town. And a lot of the areas that we were in, people were saying, "This is going to be a ghost town. We're never going to recover." But again, FEMA was there, and this city stepped up. Really, this was a proud moment for city workers because city workers were working overtime, leaving their own families to come clean up this city. And I remember it well, and remember being proud of Los Angeles for what we did, and also proud of the federal government for what it did and the partnership that we had and that we haven't seen in other disasters and we might not see when the next earthquake hits. And make no mistake, it will hit. So the key message is to be prepared, have your ready, set, go bag, have some extra cash stored away, know somebody in another area, not necessarily in LA, that can be the point of contact for your family. It's going to happen. If not an earthquake, it's going to be some other disaster. For me, it's also, that experience seared into my consciousness, the importance of preparedness, and that's been one of my top issues ever since. I have an amazing team of volunteers. I started in the assembly called the Valley Prep, and they're now the Community Action Team. And we do some crazy things. We actually have a warehouse. I'm probably the only council member here who has a large warehouse of forward-deployed emergency supplies. And when the Willsley Fire hit, and all of those folks started streaming into my district, and we had, you know, over 1,000 evacuees just recently, within hours, we were able to empty out my warehouse and have supplies to those shelters, and then start asking those folks, "What do they need?" And then as we got the list together, community people donated, and we created a donation center, were able to replenish the warehouse and get all those folks the supplies that they needed. But that was an easy one in comparison to this next earthquake. I was with Dr. Lucy Jones yesterday, and, you know, she talked about the probability of another, of an earthquake of that magnitude over the next 30 years is 99%. And she said, "The other thing is that the probability is going to be that it's not, it may be the same size, but it's going to be a much larger area if it hits the San Andreas Fault. It's not just going to be limited to the West Valley or the Valley. It's going to be that kind of shaking across a much larger area, and it will be much more difficult to get the emergency supplies that we need and to get the help that we need." So let's use this occasion, you know, celebrating the 25 years we've had without a big, major earthquake, although we've had little ones. Mother Nature reminded us, just this week, we had a 3.0 nearby. We had another one in Piedmont that, she's out there grumbling, but we know it's going to happen, and we need to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Mr. Smith and Mr. Blumenfeld for bringing this anniversary to our attention, reminding us, and also the great work that they've both done to make the city a more resilient place. We tend to forget. A little while after the shaking stops, we tend to forget how vulnerable we are, and we live in this sort of state of self-assuredness that we really should not have. I will never forget being in my house during the Northridge earthquake and wondering whether the house was going to survive that quake. I was, it was on a, I was living on a hillside at the time, and I was, I was really wondering whether my house would end up in the street. But with time, that sense of fear and vulnerability starts to fade. So it's really important, thank you, Mr. Smith, for raising this, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for discussing all that you've done to help prepare for the next one, which is inevitable. This was the most important, the most expensive natural disaster in our nation's history, and this was not even a major earthquake. A 6.7 earthquake is considered a moderate earthquake. When a major earthquake hits this city, which it will, imagine what the results will be then. And so it's important that we not only remember what's happened in the past, but that we prepare for the future. And this city has done that. Mr. Smith mentioned a few of the policy changes, going back to Mr. Bermsen. Mr. Blumenfeld's talked about some of the preparation that he's done in the West Valley, but as a city, we've also taken important steps forward by requiring reinforcement, for example, of the soft-story buildings that fell and killed so many people during that Northridge earthquake. Just a week ago, Mayor Garcetti announced Shake Alert LA, which is going to give people a little bit of advance notice, and as that
And as that continues to, to improve, we'll be able to make sure that people are not vulnerable in elevators and on transit systems and otherwise, because we'll have immediate responses like that. Um, but I also want to speak just briefly about how resilient this city is. Mr. Smith mentioned the damage and risk to this very building. After the Northridge earthquake, people were talking again about whether, and the Whittier earthquake as well, about whether this building should be torn down. But instead, we reinforced it. We made this the largest base-isolated structure on planet Earth. Uh, we restored it to its glory through Project Restore. Uh, and that's just an example of what we've done throughout this city. Uh, in North Hollywood, so many areas were red-tagged, uh, following the Northridge earthquake. We built the redevelopment agent, we, uh, built redevelopment zones in that area in response to the earthquake and as a result, North Hollywood has flourished and succeeded beyond anyone's expectations. So we can do this if we prepare and if we continue to make good policies, uh, here in this council, but also if the public, uh, takes it upon themselves with all the steps that Mr. Smith just described and demonstrated to us. Um, it's important that this be a partnership between government, uh, between our first responders, government and the public to ensure that we're ready for the inevitable next earthquake, which will come, uh, in order to keep all Angelinos safe. So, Mr. Smith, Mr. Blumenfeld, thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Uh, that concludes speakers on this, um, I don't thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Cedillo, you have a, a quick introduction, sir?
Yes. Uh, first of all, Mr. Smith, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, I recall, if I may, uh, that the county workers were very involved. We took hundreds of volunteers, uh, to the, uh, San Fernando Valley, working with a newly-elected young councilman named Richard Alacan, and we red-tagged those buildings. And also as a result of that, uh, Mr. Blumenfeld, you were talking about FEMA being at its zenith, while we were able to work because of its impact on the County General Hospital and we have a new, newly-built hospital, uh, state-of-the-art, uh, over in East Los Angeles as a result of that. So as, we like to say, uh, nothing bad comes that good doesn't also follow, so, uh, we were able to do that. Finally, I, I would hope though that we take advantage of, of lessons from that. There was tremendous coherence and coordination and leadership with Dick Riordan, Governor Wilson, uh, the County Board of Supervisors, uh, the city leadership, et cetera. And we should emulate that for other challenges we have like homelessness and housing. We would hope we could do that. And then, uh, finally, we should note that, um, that at the end of the day, it really was a question of leadership and everybody did step up, uh, including all the residents of the, of the region. And so that was a great example. We've spent a lot of time this morning, uh, Madam, uh, President, speaking about, uh, diversity and the need for diversity. Much of the diversity of this city is because people come here from everywhere. They come from the country, but they also come from other countries and, and it's reflected, I know in my district, uh, where we speak a good half dozen languages on a daily basis. And so we're here today to welcome one of the groups that has a tremendous presence in my district. From the state of Michoacan in Mexico, we have a delegation of people who are involved in the question of immigration. And so they're here with us today. Um, quiero presentar, quiero invitar el grupo de Michoacan, personas diputados que están aquí para, bueno, para ver el trabajo de nosotros y para hablar y trabajar con nosotros. This group is a group of elected, uh, state representatives from, uh, the state of Michoacan who are here. They're part of their migrant committee. They're here to talk to us. Obviously, we have our own immigration committee, uh, to talk about what are the things that we are doing and what are the things we should be doing to help deal with building bridges in the time of a discussion of walls. And so, uh, we would like to welcome all of them and introduce them, uh, in their capacities. Uh, I see, uh, diputada presidente de la comisión de migrante del Congreso de Michoacan, Cristina Yala. Cristina? I see, um, diputado integrante de la comisión de migrante del Congreso de Michoacan, Eric Juárez Blanquet. Eric? I see, uh, diputado integrante de la comisión de migrante del Congreso de Michoacan, Javier Estrada Cardenas. Javier? I see, diputado local de Michoacan, Miriam Tinoco Soto. Miriam? Who's that? Wave? Levante su mano. She's shy. Um, I see Lucia Martinez Manriquez, diputado local de Michoacan. Hola? Um, I see Salvador Arvizo Cisneros, diputado local de Michoacan. No? And I finally see Carlos Torres Piña, diputado federal presidente de la Comisión de Vivienda. And so we will be meeting with them and, and talking about the, uh, their work, our work and our ability to build bridges, as I said, during the time of walls. Finally, let me take a personal privilege and introduce a friend of mine for decades, uh, someone who has committed his life to advancing the place of immigrants in our society, Juan José Gutierrez. Bienvenido, Juan. Welcome to, uh, the chamber. Thank you for this moment. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cedillo. Y bienvenidos a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Bienvenidos. Gracias. Okay, we're going to move on, members, to multiple card, um, speakers. First speaker is Herman. I'm going to start your clock, Mr. Herman, if you don't make your way up to the podium quicker. You're just wasting time. You're, you fill out cards for items, um, number seven, item eight, nine, and 10, and general public comment. Go ahead.
So even though we face difficulty of today and that of tomorrow, deeply, I am worried for the American people in regards to removing various properties from the rent escrow due to the fact that the city has acted in bad faith against you, we, the people of Los Angeles. Their action was to put a lien on your property without the approval by certified mail and cause many emotional stress and harm like that of the city attorney, 42 USC 1983. And on behalf of all those with these liens, fuck you. In addition to our complaints in the budget and the fiscal year, even though we face today's deeply-rooted history in our nation, to have a dream. I have a dream and that dream is to support teachers in communication to the city administrative officer relative to hiring professionals who can acquire and accomplish the goals that you cannot. For I have a dream. Oh, so deeply do I have a dream. The heat of the injustice, the sweltering heat of oppression to work and be recognized as a professional and damn, damn, damn by this institution that we call justice for all. I have a motherfucking dream to make this a dream for all you motherfuckers. Cause I come here in the name of the Lord to save you from the budget of a million...
Mr. Herman, you got to get back on topic or I'm going to move you on to general public comment.
All this fucking city transfers money and authorize it by the mayor to fuck with all of you Americans. I have a dream. So no physical impact statement, no reports, and we're spending in the coffers of our budget and the ceiling deficit because we pay these fucking attorneys $300 to $600 an hour to put a lien on our motherfucking homes. I have a dream. So in regards to that 42 USC, life's a bitch. Now my general public comment. So even though we face difficulty of today and tomorrow, deeply rooted by the FBI's investigation to organize crime in the city of Los Angeles, I have a dream to see Jose Weezer from Celsion, Bishop Mora, and the Catholic fucking church go to hell for stealing your money and money laundering, motherfuckers, while my people live on the street, while my people can't get a home under HHH. No motherfucking place like home. And I have a dream to see that my people come out of this institution of bad faith, motherfucking volitions, because I got the dream to say fuck you politely.
Next speaker is Eric Previn. Mr. Herman, stop applauding, you're disrupting this meeting. Mr. Previn, you are, fill out cards for items eight, nine, and 10, and general public comment.
What about 11? Because you made an A item. You grant a comment on 11A.
Madam President, item 11 has been continued.
Right, but you made him an amendment. I'd like to address it because Sherman Oaks BID is being included.
Eight, nine, and 10.
Okay, so that's a disagreement, but you can't amend things on the fly and then not let the public speak. Appreciate your time. Um, well, that was a parking revenue idea that was intended to give some of the parking revenue from meters to the, uh, local bids. Now, we've got a bunch of bids on the agenda today. In fact, we've got Westwood, which is in Coretts' district, which as you can imagine is a $1.4 million bid, whereas Lincoln Heights is down in the, I think it's only 80 grand that they take in in assessments. And then obviously Larchmont, which is small but fancy, 135 grand. And they roll it out for, they have nice ways of talking about it, sidewalk operations, uh, streetscape services. We have one in my neighborhood too, which is about, um, I think ours is in the 200 range. The problem is a lot of these guys roll over the money. They're looking for ways to improve their communities. The only problem is, is that there's uncollected assessments and this is just a opportunity to deploy parking revenue in a way that, you know, I think that they'll be incentivized to jack up ticketing. What if they spend that money getting Blumenfeld to get a little, uh, those, those license plate detectors, which they've been rolling out through Xerox? And I know, uh, Mr. Smith knows the, the folks at Xerox. He must, because he's a, he's a tireless veteran down here. Now, the United States security, I mean, the, the Urban Access Security Initiative is where the mayor looks at the 2017 numbers and the 2018 numbers and does a little reconciliation and has determined that, because 5% of the salary, um, or 5% can go to salary funding and fringe, he's jacking it up to 804,000 for his office. The thing that kind of bummed me was, he had a $200,000 allotment for a consultant. He said, you know what? Just pay it to us, the people in the mayor's office. Now you can hear the folks outside. We have a, a strike in our street. There is, um, thousands of people are trying desperately to get a fair shake and our mayor keeps paying to his own office a bunch of, um, you know, kind of up charges. Now, we all love what the mayor is doing. We are a little disappointed that he did not respond appropriately and deploy. Uh, Coretts, I think, was the leader who was supposed to come to Studio City along with Rue and Bonin, who are leaders in campaign finance. We asked the mayor, you got to send someone, because obviously Herb Wesson is experiencing some other conflicting issues that I'll get to in my general public comment, but we really were disappointed that, uh, Coretts finked out on a very formal basis. Cause Paul Coretts was standing next to Caputo Pearl on KTLA. He's a guy who seems to care about the working poor and the working families who are trying desperately to get by, and yet he wouldn't even come to Studio City Public Library. So that was a great disappointment. Is that my general public comment time?
Yes, you have a minute for general public.
Okay. So in general public comment, I want to thank Salita Reynolds and you, council member, for sticking up for women. And in CD 12, we had an opportunity to stick Nicole Burnson in there, and I believe it's live wire, because I know that Greg Smith loves that district and I know that he doesn't want to see city money, spend two and a half million dollars to have a special election, when Nicole Burnson's being passed over by an older white male who did a great, again, nothing wrong with Greg Smith, let's agree on that. But this is an opportunity for her to sit there for 20 months, save the city 2.5 million that we could invest, we could invest, like Mayor Garcetti's talking about, in the education crisis in our city. But instead, we're going to invest in the former John Lee and Paul Coretts, where it's easy to raise $25,000 in his district, and all these electioneering guys who love to do special elections for one another. It's outrageous and Herb Wesson knows the truth and Greg Smith knows the truth, that even though he got the little box checked, it was not kosher to be a lobbyist after you work in the city hall. Just not. There's a lifetime prohibition. So I ask you to stick up for women and get Nicole in there.
Very much. Thank you for that. Thank you for your advocacy, uh, about women as well. Let's go ahead and, um, is Antonio Lopez here?
Where's my...
Antonio Lopez. Ms. McAllister, I have you on the list. Antonio Lopez was before you. Necesita traducción, señor?
Mande.
Necesita traducción en español?
Claro es que sí.
Sí, okay. Un momento, un momentito. Usted va a hablar en, en, en este... Puso la carta para el número siete, ocho, nueve, y diez. ¿Usted quiere hablar sobre esos temas?
Quiere hablar de los siete, ocho, nueve? O tiene algo en general que nos quiere decir?
Hay, por decirlo. No sé, son varios temas los que tenemos que hablar.
There are several subjects that I have to talk about. Entonces, no es nada lo que está en la agenda? Un momentito, señor. Le quiero... ¿Entonces usted va a hablar de algo en general?
Sí.
Okay. He's going to speak on general public comments then.
Cada uno de ustedes, muy buenos días.
Each one of you, good morning.
Feliz Navidad que hayan tenido y feliz año nuevo junto con reunidos con todas sus familias y seres queridos.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Years for you and all your family.
A hoy lo que se, lo que se encuentra afuera es una serie de protestas.
Outside, you can see a series of protests.
Y lo que yo estoy viendo es de que todos están brindando, porque todos están obtigando un dinero que quizá no tengamos en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles para darles a ellos.
And what I see here is that they're trying to, they're trying to, uh, ask for money, money that may, perhaps we don't have here in the City of Los Angeles.
Los maestros ganan seis mil dólares por, por cheque.
Teachers make six thousand dollars per cheque.
Entonces, el dales ellos un 6%. Yo creo que sinceramente están en un, en un sológico.
I think that to give them 6%...
Están brindando.
To see, to give them 6% is during a zoo.
Yo ofrezco que les digo un 1%.
Señor López, I am offering. Se le di un minuto y ya se le acabó el minuto para poder hablar. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí. Gracias. No. One minute for translation. No, wait a minute. Thank you very much. Gracias, señor. Okay, muchas gracias, señor. Uh, our next speaker is Patr... Señor, te está interrumpiendo la junta, por favor. Gracias. Our next speaker is Patricia McAllister. Ms. McAllister, you're, you filled out cards for general public comment, items eight and nine only, okay?
Uh, item eight, um, you want, uh, to hire the LoJack company to recover stolen cars or stolen vehicles. And I agree with that. We have millions of vehicles being stolen a year here in Los Angeles because of the 15 million illegal aliens who live in Los Angeles, the Hispanic, Latinos, Asians, and Filipinos, and don't forget the Koreans especially. Um, we have 300, we have 600,000 illegal alien students, Hispanic, Latino, Asian, Filipino, and Koreans in Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Unified School District. They're outside protesting. I have photos. There are only maybe about four black people out there. They're all illegal aliens, Hispanic, Latinos, Koreans, Asians, Filipinos. I want people who visit Los Angeles to come... I want people who visit Los Angeles to come here to see this nonsense. Now here you want urban area securing initiative, security initiative, and you're gonna give Mayor Garcetti $133,866. Why are we giving him $133,000? What is he doing? He doesn't come to these meetings. The city is in bad shape. You can't even drive down the street. Homeless people land everywhere in this city. We don't know where the HHH money went. You're opening up shelters. We don't want shelters. We want housing for these homeless people. And you want to give the mayor $133,000? All of you need to be investigated. What has happened to this city? It's unbelievable. It is unbelievable, and I know why it's happening. I know why it's happening. You can't fool me. We want these people off the street. My people, black people, are in these, 20,000 on Skid Row, three Negroes on this panel haven't done a doggone thing about it. Herb Wesson doesn't even have a social service agency in his district.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Madam President? My public... One minute for general public comment.
We have a border-
Ma'am, hold on for just a second. Madam City Attorney?
I just want to note for the record that Mr. Herman has been waving his arms constantly and walking back and forth in the back of the room, trying to distract our attention from the speaker.
This is a second warning, Madam City Attorney. So let's go ahead and ask Mr. Herman to leave our council chambers. Sergeants, can you please ask Mr. Herman to leave? Ask him to leave as quietly as possible so he can stop disrupting our meeting. I apologize to you, Ms. McAllister.
Can you reset my clock, please?
We are gonna do that in just a second. Go ahead and reset our clock. Go ahead.
We have a border crisis in the United States. With 25 million homeless American citizens, the Democrats don't want a wall, because many of them are making money off of the drug cartels and from the prostitution of illegal alien children. A wall would take money out of their pockets. According to records, many of our congress members are drug addicts and alcoholics, and they are in drug rehabilitation programs. Now, drug addicts tend to steal. We know that. If you have any drug addict relatives, you usually don't want them in your house. The prostitutes, the prostitution of children is very prominent right now. It's going on a lot, and it's because of these politicians. 30 to 35 years in Congress is too long, okay? We need term limits for congress members. We've had some in Washington DC for 50 years. They think they run this nation. They think they own this nation. They don't. We want those drug addicts out of office, especially Nancy Pelosi. Go to San Francisco and look at how nasty it is in San Francisco. It's a shame.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Leah Renee Mesmick. Are you here? Leah?
Hello.
Thank you. Leah, you just filled out a card for general public comment, so go ahead.
General public comment, one minute.
That's correct.
I am a woman property owner in the city of Los Angeles Coastal Zone, and Los Angeles has failed me. Fact, during the last four days of storms, 280 Trini Way had multiple landslides where they had excavated the slope. It appears that Scott McPherson and city officials and LA DVS are deliberately causing a landslide, a major disaster above the state Pacific Coast Highway, to the detriment of my property and my elderly neighbors. I submitted an outline to you this morning, LA City Council, that outlines the violations of law and the safety hazards. My ask is that you honor the city of Los Angeles order to comply issued to Scott McPherson on October 23, 2012, and stop telling people that you're gonna take care of women and, but doing something else and violating my right to own a property. Please uphold the California Civil Code 832.
Thank you, Ms. Mesmick. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Yes, your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Griffin. Are you here? Mr. Griffin is what I have on my tablet. Is he here?
Is that you?
That's you? Sure, come on down. You filled out a card, well, you filled out a card for general public comment in items eight, nine, and 10. Is that correct?
That sounds good.
Okay. You have to speak on the items first, and then I'll give you your one minute of general public comment.
All right.
Okay.
On the item, I don't know what the item is.
You filled out, you filled out the card.
Right.
Item eight, nine, and 10.
I can't speak on eight, nine, and 10, because I don't know what-
Okay, so then why don't we just go ahead and give you your one minute of general public comment?
Ah.
Sorry about that. Those are the rules. Go ahead, you can, go ahead and speak.
Madam Chair, members of the city council, I'm Morris Griffin, community activist, leader and problem solver. And I rise today on behalf of our teachers. It disturbs me to have to stand before you nine years later, knowing that we passed Proposition 30 and Proposition 55 for $93 billion for wealthy tax. It disturbs me to know that our mayor is going to run for the presidency, and yet at the same time, we're not hearing from him or Gavin Newsom. I rise on behalf of the fact that we need to show America that we are not Looney Tunes, that we have billions of dollars instead of $2 billion to help our teachers with not only their council, their library, as well as their nurses. We've got to show that, ah, ah. Thanks for your time. That's all of my time.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment for all cards, including general public comments. Members, let's go ahead and vote on items seven through 10. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes. Did you say 12 eyes? Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
Posted and referred. Are there any announcements? Or did you have, hold on, Mr. Corretts has asked, he's been on the keyboard.
Thank you for the announcements, Madam President. I'd like to, nine and 10, forthwith.
Forthwith on nine and 10 for Mr. O'Farrell. And Mr. Corretts, do you have an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have what might be kind of a good follow-up to Mr. Blumenfield's heart-thumping rescue video that we saw recently. Earlier in January during the recess, I was able to help take the mayor of Puerto Rico, Mayor Cruz, at her request of San Juan, Puerto Rico, to see the Woolsey fire burn areas. And so, we had a group, including Henry Stern and the mayor of Malibu and local council members from the cities affected from Calabasas, Agoura Hills, and Malibu. And I think she wanted to see it as a follow-up to her own devastation in San Juan, which continues to be almost completely devastated, as does Puerto Rico, and to make the connection to climate change. So we had a very talented independent filmmaker who joined us named Cynthia Sharp, and he shot a very short video of this tour, and so I'd like to show it for the council, if I might.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jefferson Wagner, mayor of city of Malibu. From the ridgeline to the coastline, from Topanga to Trancas, welcome once again to Ensignal Canyon, where we're at the bottom of a mud flow from the debris from the Woolsey Fire.
Today, we're touring the burn areas of the Woolsey Fire with a number of elected officials from the area and with the mayor of San Juan.
Es que la montaña en realidad se quemó completamente. Lo que ha sucedido es que los lagos, el lago que hay aquí, que...
Letting her see the devastation, which is similar to what they had in Puerto Rico with the terrible hurricanes. She's gregarious and wonderful and highly esteemed, and she got to see our devastation from the Woolsey Fire, and we shared stories about how communication was the real issue. She knew how, what to do, how to do it. Called my girlfriend, said, I'm here with your boyfriend.
Hello, Candace?
It was, that's really special. It's hard to explain somebody that would go into that detail and that help to make one person happy.
Are you, are you getting all the help you need and all the assistance you need?
Sadly, we lost three people here to the fire. She lost 3,000.
I lived in a shelter for four months, and I did it because I thought that I had to go through the same experience that my constituents were going through.
I lost my home, and I was put in the hospital in intensive care because I ran out of water and I was caught in the home, and I breathed in too much bad stuff.
This is where I went to high school. You look out in the back there, that's like, that's Malibu High.
The island is still devastated, and most of the population is still not back yet.
We still have homeowners here who haven't even come back to see their debris.
When you hear the fire and the abstract, but when you actually see this, this entire mobile home park is leveled. There's virtually nothing salvageable anywhere in the area here. They lost over 100 homes, and some of the people are going to come back, and there are even signs that indicate that, and others are never gonna set foot in this place again. It's everywhere you look. I mean, this was somebody's home.
We did a five-year-old birthday party post-fire for the children who didn't get to have their birthday parties in November and December, and we did it at the Boys and Girls Club here in Malibu, which I run, and we called it the Five-Year-Old Superpower Party, and brought all of our families together and had the opportunity to convene and grieve and also kind of celebrate what we have to look forward to as a community.
We have a lot to learn from each other.
Climate change has also to do with climate justice.
The hurricanes that hit Puerto Rico, we know were more severe because of climate change, and we know that the fires that are happening in California are more severe and more frequent because of a changing climate.
It doesn't matter how rich you are or how humble your beginnings are. Fire affects us all equally.
When I was younger, Eddie would go, man, any wave, anywhere. He would just go for it. With the rains and with the ash debris that's in the outflow from the creeks, the water's pretty dirty, and the county actually came out and said, the water's dirty, don't surf.
There were household chemicals here, pesticides, paints, cleaners, those all, you know, those are there.
Yeah, and we're surfers, you know, so we, like, when it, when it runs through these creeks, like, you, you see it in the ocean. We haven't been, I mean, the ocean's been toxic, basically, for surfing for months.
This is one where I'd say to Eddie, you really want to get sick? Just go right on out.
It has been tragic and difficult to, as a scientist, to see these things that we predicted actually materializing.
The crisis doesn't end when the fire ended or when the hurricane left.
It's not a question of richer or poorer. It's not a question of ethnicity. It's not a question of religion.
This isn't about politics anymore. This is really about survival and quality of life and how we can thoughtfully move forward together as one large community, not individual communities, and make sure that our kids have safe environments to grow up in and not have to live in fear of natural disaster.
Climate doesn't discriminate between your party or your background or what country you're from.
If we don't make these changes through developing a different set of values, then we're gonna keep doing the exact same thing.
It feels good for us to come together, but it's also something that we have to do.
As devastating as this is, it's gonna be nothing compared to the future we face if we don't address this issue. Everybody is in it together.
You can hide your head in the sand, and the sand will get too hot and you'll have to pull your head out, and then what you're gonna get is a bunch of smog and dust and crap, and you'll go, guess what? It's here.
We have to recognize, we can't keep denying climate change. We need to all get together, take every dramatic step we can, otherwise this will just be a down payment on what conditions we'll be facing in the decades to come.
Thank you for that, Mr. Corretts. Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements? Mr. Buscagno doesn't have any, you have an adjourned motion? Okay, why don't we all rise for adjourned motions, members? Go ahead, Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Lena Bezmalinovich, who is the mother of the Port of Los Angeles, San Pedro Advocate, Augie Bezmalinovich. A longtime resident of San Pedro peacefully passed away in January 11th, born in 1929 in the town of Komija, island of Vis, Croatia. She spent her childhood days in Komija and on the nearby island of Bizevmo. When World War II began, her father immigrated to America settling in San Pedro and worked as a fisherman. Lena, her mother, and maternal grandparents were deported to Oshat, a displaced persons camp on the Sinai Peninsula in Egypt, where she spent two of her teen years living as a refugee in the desert. Her and her mother arrived in US on December 16, 1945, from Egypt and were finally reunited with her father. She began school at San Pedro High without any understanding of the English language. Lena went to work at Starkis Canary, where she met her future husband, John, and they married in 1951 at the Holy Trinity Church on O'Farrell Street. When her children were older, Lena worked at a local dry cleaners on Ninth in Cabrillo Street, and then as an LA Unified Cafeteria Manager, where she retired after several years. Lena was a tremendous cook and made fabulous Croatian cookies, and she was a remarkable seamstress, gardener, and artist. She loved people, her family, her friends. She easily made friends, and most of all, she'd be remembered for a loving, dedicated wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, aunt, and friend to all. Our thoughts and prayers are with Augie, his family, and the entire Bezmalinovich family. May she rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Buscagno, are there any other adjourned, Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. On Wednesday, we adjourned in memory of Barbara Yaroslavsky, and this morning I want to point out that this has been an incredibly difficult month or so for our friend Zev Yaroslavsky. Not only did he lose his life partner, but he also lost, a few days apart, his dear friend Adina Solomon, who worked for him as a field deputy for many years, not just here in City Hall, but also at the County Board of Supervisors. She was also very well-known for her extensive work with Fairfax High School, and she was beloved by family, friends, constituents, department personnel, neighborhood organizations, social service agencies, and city and county officials alike. In addition, she was honored by the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce in 2003, receiving the 2003 Women in Leadership Award. She is survived by son Ron Solomon and daughter Sheila Berman, two grandchildren, Zapora and Jacob Berman, and a sister, Tikva Rosenthal. In lieu of flowers, the family requests donations may be made to Fairfax High School with a notation that is for the Adina Solomon Community Service Award, and may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. If you don't mind adding me to the adjourned motion as well, very good friends with Sheila. I also found the news heartbreaking soon after Barbara had passed away, so if you don't mind adding me to that adjourned motion, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.